She said she still needs to start it.
Talking like a conehead.
Yeah, we'll just let Molly get situated.
I get that reference.
So we're live.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to welcome you all to our Tuesday, June 28th, Cook County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. I apologize for the delay. We're having a little bit of an issue with our livestream, but we're happy that we're up and running. It is right now time to stand and have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as we look at our agenda today, are there any adjustments to our agenda?
Madam Chair. I would propose that we remove a what appears to be a redundant item under MIS for U.S. Forest Service tower tenant agreements.
Thank you so much. All right. And I did also receive an email from Jay indicating that that was a duplicate item that needed to be removed. Thank you. Any other adjustments to our agenda?
It sounds like Commissioner Hawkins has a question. I think it was on consent last
It was on consent last time.
The Forest Service land exchange G? What number are you?
No, 6A. MIS Tower.
It's for the tower agreements.
Okay. I thought these were something different.
Other adjustments to the agenda? Other adjustments to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Oh.
I'll make that a motion.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. And we have a second from Commissioner Mills. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Public comment period. This is an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board, and anybody wishing to speak can come forward to the microphone and share their name and address and address the board.
Good morning. I'm Steve Surbaugh. Commissioners and staff, thank you for allowing me to say a few brief words this morning. I applaud the process of reviewing the current vacation ordinance and licensing that came out of a process that we started in 2015. It is valuable for that review process that we now have consistent data for a few years. I'm hopeful that what comes of this are consensus and data-driven adjustments to the ordinance if needed. I further applaud the committee for desiring to have more voices at the table discussing these matters. I urge you to consider having Cascade Vacation Rentals represented with a primary seat at the steering committee. Here are a few of the reasons why I think I have a great deal to offer. CVR and myself are subject matter experts in short-term rentals. I participate in both the Minnesota Department of Health Short-Term Rental Task Force and on the Explore Minnesota Short-Term Rental Task Force. I also have continued to serve with several national groups concerning short-term rentals. Notwithstanding, this has been my job for my full-time job for 18 years. County staff and commissioners have frequently referred to our management as the gold standard. This is backed up by our law and compliance record with the Minnesota Department of Health and our sales tax audit that found zero errors in lodging and sales tax collection in the three-year audit period. CVR strives to be the leader in vacation rental standards, so we have consistently held our guests to a higher standard than our resort guests because we are mindful of our neighbors and our community, specifically regarding allowed use for each home, parking noise, and regulations. We would appreciate the opportunity to share our knowledge, experience, and insight regarding these subjects with the committee. I can understand the earlier optic of having three CVR appointees at the table, Mike Larson representing real estate, Clarence Leslie serving as an alternate. I agree that optic feels weighted to one side. I get that. The suggestion to move Mike to an alternate spot and to remove Claire altogether, I feel like is a creative solution. Myself and the rest of our ownership are deeply committed to our neighbors and this community. We exemplify that by the numerous boards we serve on in a voluntary capacity. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Are there any other public comments? All right, if not, we'll close the public comment period. I would like to recognize that Commissioner Storley is not here today. She has unexcused absence, so I just wanted to recognize that's why her chair is vacant. All right, we'll move on with our consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I will support.
Thank you much, Commissioners Swalison. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is maintenance, and Brian Silas is coming forward to share some information with us. Good morning, Brian.
So I'm here to talk about some remodeling and changing of some offices, some office furniture that we need to purchase for the community center, the highway department, and public health.
All right.
So where do we want to start?
Well, so I guess I'll jump in, Brian, if it's okay. We had a conversation at the county building committee meeting last week to talk about these projects, and there was a longer discussion about how we have in the past handled these kinds of issues. So in the past, when there's been a need for an office reconfiguration, it has been our practice simply for the department to work with the maintenance department to make arrangements. It has not always been our practice to come forward to the board to talk about what's being done because it is part of the overall maintenance budget. But the conversation in the building committee meeting highlighted some, what I think are some weaknesses in our process that we need to address, one of which is we do have a purchasing policy which requires that any purchases of $1,000 or more come before the board. And there's a longer conversation that I would like to have with the five of you when Commissioner Storley is back about that policy because I'm not sure it's very practical, frankly. I think that limit is fairly low, and I think it was established at a time when there were concerns by specific board members about, and this predates the administrator, to my understanding, administrative form of government. But in any case, now that we are in a different place and under different circumstances, I think it'd be valuable to revisit that policy. But getting back to the matter immediately at hand, these projects came forward. There is money in the maintenance budget to cover them, and in the past, it's just been our practice to go forward and do those projects. But we, and we also don't have a specific line item in the budget for office furniture. And so typically, the way it's worked in the past is these kinds of expenses get paid out of the maintenance budget, and we don't, we haven't really asked departments to estimate what they think their furniture costs for the year are going to be when they're putting together the budget proposal. And in my view, that's a weakness. I think we need to address that. I think there should be a line item so that we understand clearly what departments are anticipating in terms of furniture needs. I also recognize that it's not always possible to know in advance what kinds of needs may come up in the course of a year. But I do think a good start would be to include line items in the departmental budgets so that we have some sense of what folks are anticipating, and that is something that you will see in the 2023 budget proposal. So, but then getting back to the matter of process in terms of handling these kinds of issues, I do think that we need to have a regular way for the board to be informed about when we're doing these kinds of purchases. And so that would be another part of this. It's not only, and I guess if we're actually including something in the budget, that kind of reduces the need to have these conversations with the board because those expenses will already have been approved. But again, it's a process that needs to be tightened up a little bit, and so that's what we're going to be working on. In the meantime, we do have these immediate needs for these office reconfigurations, both in the highway department, at the community center, which has not been updated since the community center was built in 1993, and then we also have some furniture to accommodate increased staff in the public health and human services department.
Thank you so much for that explanation. That's very helpful. Brian, how do you feel about the change? I'm just curious.
I think it needs to be done. You know, there's ergonomic issues up at the community center and also at the highway department. They need, you know, better setup than what they have. And by doing the community center, we can use some of the furniture from public health and save some money there, and then we can just open their one room up so they get more room for two people. It's pretty tight in there. You can't get through very well. So I think it's something that we need to do.
All right.
The other thing I should mention about the purchasing policy is that there is a provision where in an emergency circumstance, we can go ahead and make a purchase and then inform the board after the fact. And those kinds of circumstances may include if there's like an immediate danger to staff where we have to buy something to make sure that employees are safe on the job. Also, for example, if there were like a great deal, like let's say a line of furniture was being discontinued and we had the opportunity to get it at a deep discount, that would be a circumstance in which we would act to make sure that we got that discount. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to, you know, if we waited to get board approval, then that deal would be gone. So, but again, I think it's just a matter of making our process clearer and more transparent so that everybody's aware of what's going on.
And James did talk about the community center hasn't been updated since it was built. So there are a few other things that we're going to go in and do at the same time, which makes sense to do it now, to save time and money to do that.
Absolutely. Any other questions or any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Normally, I sit on the building committee, and I was not able to attend, and I want to thank Commissioner Hawkins for attending that and really appreciate the discussion around the policy update. I think that makes a whole lot of sense and certainly recognize the needs that we have immediately too, and just appreciate, again, the flexibility of the highway department and public health with just making things work and making things work better too, so.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other questions or remarks? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, can you go back to talking about the furniture in public health, human services that's going to be used at the community center? Because is it their old furniture? 10 months ago, we spent $22,000 to remodel five offices up there.
No, this would be some of that furniture.
The new furniture that was purchased 10 months ago?
Yes.
And I can elaborate a little bit because I was, yeah, no, I was up there. The furniture that we bought initially in order to make things work up there, we have people, you know, double teamed in offices. We bought a really tall partition for one of the small offices, and it created a situation where the workspace, both workspaces were very, very small, and the back workspace also, like there was no light back there. And I was up there, and it was really, like I felt claustrophobic in that space. And so what we're doing is we're taking that equipment or that furniture, which we've already paid for, and repurposing it in the community center, and then getting a different configuration. It's going to be a smaller wall to, so that the room doesn't feel so closed in. And that was something that we didn't anticipate. When we bought the equipment, it's like, yeah, it makes sense to have high partitions because they need privacy for the work that they do. But after we got it in, it became apparent that it was really not optimal for the room.
And so your quote for the community center, $6,000, whatever that amount was, is still in addition to moving that furniture?
That's correct.
That's correct.
It's not coming off of?
Because we are adding the new ships person up there, and then all of the equipment there for Sarah and for Leanne are really old, so they have to go. So.
The other thing that we, in preparation for this discussion, I was trying to get a handle on how much have we spent on furniture over the last five years, and that brought to light that we don't really have a line item that allows us to query that. And that's why we're making that addition.
And I'm glad that we're working on that. I think that is extremely important. And so, but my question is now, okay, we're going to take $22,000 or $20,000, whatever that number is, I don't have it written in front of me. Out of your budget, what's not going to happen? Obviously, you had a budget and you had plans, and this is something new. Are we going to go over budget in your department, or are you?
No.
Going to put something else off?
This is a different budget. Brady and I talked about it this morning. This is a building fund, which is a, you know, lump sum of money that sits there. We pull it out for different projects as needed. And there's, what did you say, Brady, half a million?
Okay, so it, when?
So it's not going to limit us on what we do.
It's not coming out of your 2022 budget. It's coming out of budget reserves is what we're proposing.
Correct.
It's not coming out of the general fund.
Right, unless some other project doesn't get done.
That's, that was my question. Where's the money coming from?
It just changes our priorities on where it's going to go. And I think people in offices and ergonomics is a priority. So.
Okay. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other further discussion or any questions for Brian? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the five quotes for the community center, public health and human services, and highway department.
Thank you so much, Commissioners Swalison. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. We'll move on to item five, which is the highway department, and our highway engineer, Robbie Haas, is here this morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So what you have in front of you is actually something we were supposed to talk about back in March. We did include it in a presentation. I think the presentation just took a little while, and we focused on that. And to be honest, I kind of forgot about this too. But what this is, is a bridge replacement priority list. What it does, and it's just out the next five years. What it does is something we submit every year to state aid. It helps them see, I don't know, what needs we have up here. And you'll see it's broken down by funding as well, types of, you know, how are we going to fund these projects? It really helps state aid too, because then they gather this from every county, and they can submit it to legislature as well to see, hey, look at all this bridge bonding needs that we have, for example. Or look at all this funding we need through the state aid side of things. We need more money or whatever. So it really helps illustrate kind of funding needs up here for us, to the state. And then also, though, it helps kind of us and everybody see what our needs are. I think something that's really interesting with this list is this is, with the exception of one bridge, because it's only a five-year plan, this is every replaceable bridge in the county right now, has a means of being funded, I think. I think we're there. But what's neat, and I guess some things I draw your attention to, is the column that says township or state bridge funds requested. What really, what that illustrates is the whole town road, UT Road, that, a lot of money got moved into that column once we designated that. Before, that would have been under local funds or state aid funds. So you'll notice that the local or state aid column, those numbers are comparatively much smaller than that other one. So, does anybody have any questions, I guess, on this? And these are all estimates, obviously, subject to change, you know, with the project and as they come up. So, comments or concerns?
Commissioner Hawkins?
I have a question.
Sure.
Just a few months ago.
Yes.
We approved a bridge resolution. I believe it was August. I don't have my right paper in front of me.
That's okay.
I forgot that at home. But we did it in '21, and the bridge numbers have changed, and I did notice one bridge was not on there, Flutre River Bridge.
Oh, we might have added it. That could have been something.
And I'm like, so why are we doing this again? Why do we need another resolution?
So we do them annually. So it's a five-year rolling one, and so I think.
Every year, we, even though it's a five-year plan, we have to do this every year.
Yeah, it's similar. Well, you know, because then, like, so next year when we do this, for example, we'll have 2027 projects on there, and then that'll have, you know, the one extra bridge that's on there. Similarly, if projects get bumped a year, for example.
Cross River.
Cross River is a great example of that. From previous, you know, then it updates again. It's similar when we do like, you know, like the 10-year transportation plan. You know, I don't give that presentation once every 10 years. Do it every year because it's a rolling thing. Projects get added. Funding might change. You know, if a grant becomes available, it could, you know, offset local or state aid costs, for example. Yeah.
So, okay, I was just trying to match up.
Sure.
My notes of, well, we did this then.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal, but why do we have old bridge numbers and new bridge numbers? Do all our numbers?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
The changes?
Yes, it does. Yeah, so there's old, so old bridge numbers mean, like, so right now, stuff that's out in the field that exists currently, that is that bridge. It is assigned a number.
Yeah.
Call it whatever is listed there. When we do a new project, we, it gets assigned a new number. It's a new, yeah, I know. Yeah.
This is, this is my frustration with government.
Yeah, there you go.
Really, we got to keep redoing and changing, and you're spending more time doing paperwork than.
It is, yeah. They moved it online, so it makes it a little easier. But yeah, no, it is. And that's just, yeah, that's just the process is that. And so they like to see, when we submit this, they want the old bridge number because that's what's existing. When we do new bridge numbers, you know, it's just a new project, and it's just something I have to do. I don't get a choice, unfortunately.
Is that a state or a federal?
Good question. State, I mean, I do it through the state. So I don't know if FHWA makes us do it or if it's a, if MINDOT makes us do it. I'm assuming FHWA, I guess.
I'm just going to keep adding to my list of what I think is wrong with our.
That's fair, yeah. No, and that can be, yeah, I can understand how that would be confusing. That, yeah, the number doesn't stay the same at each location, so you can just keep that in your head. It changes every time we do a project somewhere.
Thank you.
All right. Helpful information. Other questions or discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you much, Commissioners Swalison. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Robbie.
And land services. So we're going to have Tim Nelson come forward. We're not even going to take a break. We're doing it up differently.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a continuation, frankly, of the discussion, as you'd heard in the public comments. This morning, we had initiated this redo. We kind of forced it on ourselves to do a three-year evaluation and total review of the vacation rental program and licensing ordinance and such that we have. We did, the Board of Commissioners had approved the composition of the full program review committee back in, I believe it was May, and then it was up to the steering committee to go ahead and come up with a recommendation for the specific members. We had put out for advertising for people to go ahead and apply. We had the different categories for, that we had actually added to the list. And I would say that this list, the committee, as we had discussed back in May, is much larger than it was back in 2015 through 2018. When we initially did this, we added some more outside representation, more members of the public in different kinds of categories, and ended up with a bit more of a substantial committee than we had back through the first couple go-rounds with it. So we do, we did add the resorts, the large resorts, small resorts, realtors, vacation rental management, and members of the public. Now, we do have categories such as the Coalition of Lake Associations, the city of Grand Marais itself, and then Grand Portage, and we had left it up to those entities to go ahead and submit their names that they would like representing themselves, representing them. So that, those names are included in on that list. We had, you know, regrettably, only 17 applications that had come in. Interestingly enough, I had posted that survey out in the public and closed it yesterday because we have to do the compilation of responses to that survey. We ended up with just under 580 responses, so there's a lot of interest out there. A lot of people are going to be following this. But regrettably, we only had less than 20 applications on there. The distribution of that, as you can see from the resorts, we only did have one application for the large resorts. We had two for the small resorts, two for the realtors, four for the rental management, and then eight, yeah, eight or nine from the public to represent the public. And a couple of those applications that had come in had indicated that, such as the realtor's, Lindgarde had volunteered to participate, but she indicated she only wished to participate as a alternate and not as a primary, which is why some of those decisions were somewhat easy. You know, we have one applicant for the large resorts. We have, that would automatically kind of go into that primary position. And again, that was the decision of the committee to honor Linda's request is to be the alternate, and so that kind of put Mike Larson in for the primary. There was some discussion over the small resorts with regards to the fact that Scott with the Best Western is actually representing kind of the perspective that it's not, it's an establishment, lodging establishment, that's not within the city or within the county's jurisdictional limits of our ordinance, but neither is the city of Grand Marais, and neither is Grand Portage. And so we felt that that was still being impacted as well as a lodging facility by vacation rentals, and wanted to, the intent of this, the steering committee and the evaluation was to get as broad a mix as possible, to get maybe new voices on that hadn't been heard in the past, and also with the understanding that this is not a all-or-nothing venture here, that anybody that is not appointed to the committee still has the opportunity. And we fully would expect anybody who isn't appointed to the committee would still continue to offer up any expertise and knowledge that they would have to the committee throughout the process. It's going to be livestreamed. People can attend the meetings. There's public comments, and can be, any public input or involvement can also be submitted through letters, emails, documentation of that sort. And so through the deliberation that we had, this, you have the list in front of you, what the steering committee has recommended for the full program review committee. And I guess I would just leave that for any questions that you may have.
Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Is John Schlute a small resort owner?
He was. That was part of the discussion. He had sold out, and so he is not. That was kind of our thought as, well, could he be shifted in or not or whatever? But he actually did sell out, so he is not anymore. And we understand that Mr. Martinson is selling his as well as a small resort. So it was kind of, you know, there was, there was a lot of discussion involved, a lot of the factors that are around there. And the interest with John Schlute, I would just add, sorry, is that he was also on the planning commission. There's a lot of, a lot of well-rounded discussions with regards to the pros and the cons and the benefits and the detriments of vacation rental operations all around the county.
All right. Thank you. Other questions?
Well, yeah, I appreciate the insight there with Scott's position too, because that seems a little, not quite the right fit, but I guess I don't have a problem with it. You know, Steve Surbaugh is in my district, and he gave me a call, and he was involved with the previous committee. And, you know, I think that the smaller short-term rental management companies are really important in this. management companies are, are really, uh, important in this discussion. Um, but I also think, um, just the insight and expertise of, um, Mr. Surbaugh would be, would be pretty valuable. And so after poking around a little bit, it sounded like, and Steve, are you still a licensed realtor?
I am, but yes.
Okay.
You're required to be a broker to manage, to manage vacation rentals.
Okay. Um, well, after poking around a little bit, I didn't poke that, but now I did. Um, my understanding is, uh, and there were concerns about, you know, stacking the deck, right? Too many, too many, um, of the same players or from the same organization. But my understanding now is that Mike Larson would prefer, um, to have Steve on, on the committee if it meant, um, him going off. Um, and, and, um, and, you know, I, my understanding is their company is no longer tied, or they're not, no longer business partners. Certainly, there's some overlap still, as there is with other, other members too, but, um, uh, I think that's, Mr. Surbaugh had more expertise in that side of things than Mike. Um, and so I just find that more valuable, especially hearing from Mike that he was okay with that. And so that would be my, um, suggestion for the board is to swap those names out. Um, and that would retain smaller vacation, uh, rental representation there with Stevie, who I think that would be, uh, I think that's a really important aspect. Um, but then also give, you know, the expertise and experience, um, a place on, on the committee as well. So any thoughts there, either from Mr. Nelson, or?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, the, the, the suggestion is to, uh, remove, uh, Mike as the primary realtor and put in Steve Surbaugh as the primary realtor. Okay, because it was, it had been part of my, uh, the thought or the discussion that, um, you know, that, that he might want to take, Mike might take up, or withdraw himself, making Linda the, the primary realtor, and then.
She didn't want that.
Shift that around. No, she did not want that.
Right.
And so that was, that was the primary concern there.
Yeah, yeah. So this would, would keep, um, Ms. Garrity's, you know, position. Um, and, and it sounded like Mike was agreeable to that, and I presume Steve is. Um, but it just is the board, um, thinking that's good thinking, and, and do you think that's, that's good thinking? So.
I guess I would ask Attorney Hickon a question. Um, is it important on this group to have an actual broker?
What we talked about at the committee is that, um, the kind of legal definition of a, a vacation rental management company, um, and that requirement of having a broker is something that the committee could take or leave depending on what perspective they were looking for. Um, so, you know, you have a real estate representative who is also a broker, um, and then you have, you're looking for a vacation rental management company. Um, do you also want the perspective of the vacation rental management company who has a broker? That's, to me, that's, um, a decision that the committee and the commissioners can make. It, um, there's no tie to, you know, there's no requirement or statute that says this committee must have the legal definition of a vacation rental. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. I just wanted that clarified.
Yep.
For ourselves and for the public.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to point out too, that this, this committee, um, is, is, um, gonna be, you know, gathering perspectives, analyzing perspectives, analyzing data, and then bringing a recommendation to the board for, for us to decide. So the committee doesn't have any, uh, legal authority. Um, they, they will be providing recommendations, um, and, and we can accept or modify or deny those recommendations. Um, I know in the past, there was some, um, offense taken that, um, you know, we, we had the committee and, and then, um, kind of the ordinance writing was done by staff, and, and the committee wasn't involved with that. But, um, I think just as long as we have those expectations of what the committee is for and what it's not for, that, um, it's gonna be a much better process this time, especially with the larger, um, and more diverse, um, perspectives there, so.
All right, thank you. Other questions or concerns? Commissioner Hawkins?
I have a question about why we ask for alternates. I, that confuses me as somebody who, if I'm going to apply to be on a board, I want to give my opinion. And are the alternates, are they expected to come to the meetings to keep up to date of what the discussions are, or?
Uh, that's actually a really good question, Madam Chair. Commissioner Hawkins, the, uh, there, there was a lot of discussion around the participation level or expectations of the alternates versus the primary. And, and indeed, uh, the primaries are the, uh, main participants on the committee. Um, the existence of the alternates was that because there was so much interest in that, we didn't want to, if a primary wasn't participating, we didn't want to have an open spot left open. If somebody just dropped out and didn't want to do, we wanted somebody at least to be able to, to participate that, uh, in that, that process, especially with the public, uh, positions on there. Um, the way that it, it is intended to be structured though, that if the primary, so long as the primary is attending and participating, that the alternate can certainly submit public comments, but does not actually participate, uh, in, and at, at the discussion in, on the committee level unless the primary is, is not there. And so, um, it's, it's an either or. Either the, the, the primary is there and participating, or the alternate that would then step up. And it would be anticipated and expected, certainly because of the few numbers of people who had submitted applications, that the alternates would be paying attention, uh, to the process anyway. The, the meetings will be livestreamed, they'll be open to the public for people to be attending. There'll be, uh, public comment periods at, at each of the, the meetings. So even, even if the primary is there, the alternate would be able to have a voice at the table by, be able to submit, uh, comments.
I guess I maybe just disagree with that process of requesting to be an alternate, that you should request to be on the committee, and then, hey, we have too many, we decide who gets to be the alternate and not by choice. That, that's just one thing.
Well, we could understand it only because of, summer's really busy. And we wanted to do this in the summer to gain participation from those that may be out of the county during the winter time and such like that, so we really wanted to do it. But a lot of people that are impacted quite a bit, uh, especially you can understand on the realtor side, are quite busy, uh, as well during the summer. So yes, they want to be able to participate, but couldn't find maybe that they would be able to be connected as much as they had hoped.
Okay. And I just want to say also that I, I disagree with your reasoning for the small resorts. Um, nothing against Best Western or that operation, and they've been in business many years, been a part of our community. But, um, I really have a problem with somebody serving on that board that the ordinance wouldn't even apply to. We already have City of Grand Marais representation to get that perspective. Um, so I'm, yeah, I just talk about what, how did you determine that somebody that lives outside of the county has a business here, but doesn't have to follow the county rules, has a better perspective than somebody that lives in the county and has a current operation? Now, I don't know, Mr. Martenson, it, when that is gonna go on for sale, or if it is. I haven't asked him. Was that, did somebody call him and say, are you gonna be in business throughout the year?
That's, it's anecdotally, I mean, he's told me personally that he's selling out, uh, as well, and expects to be buying another place. But that really didn't play as much into, uh, the discussion. It, it, certainly the discussion was both ways, and it was very deliberative. It wasn't just, well, let's grab a guy from the city. It was, uh, a, a little bit more thoughtful than that in trying to obtain a balance, uh, of the voices. And certainly, it was, uh, you know, as I indicated, the, the fact that, that, that business or lodging establishments period are impacted by vacation rentals, there's a, there's a perspective that we hadn't had. Mr. Martenson had participated in the first committee process, and so he, he was, uh, connected. And we, part of the deliberation was, we would like to try to see, you know, different voices or fresh voices from all what we had heard, uh, already. So we're trying to expand, um, the, the room, so to speak. That's why we increased the number of the, the positions on there. And, you know, there was, there were thoughts expressed on both sides. Exactly what you're expressing, well, this is the city, may not be appropriate, but it was determined in the end by the steering committee, um, that, and it was agreed that, um, well, we have the, the city on there, and they're, they're not within our jurisdictional boundaries. Uh, the Grand Portage, uh, travel there, they're not within our boundaries, and they don't even have any vacation rentals. So why do we include them in on there? It's just a, a matter of expanding and trying to get as many voices as possible and, and, uh, getting that information. It, it wasn't anything personal against Mr. Martenson.
And I appreciate that. I didn't want to imply that. Um, but that is a perfect segue into my next question about the vacation rental survey. So we asked the community their perspective on this. We got 580 responses, which pleases me. But we don't know what, how the community, what their issues are yet. And it seems to me that it might be more appropriate to appoint a committee to address those issues after that data has been compiled. So we make sure we have knowledgeable people on that committee that can speak to whatever the public thinks are the issues. Can you respond to that?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
When presented to the board, um, the intent of that survey was to be able to get as much response as possible, and, and thankfully, it was very successful. We actually kept it open a little bit longer than intended because we had postponed this appointment to the, to the particular meetings. Now that we have 580, uh, responses, it is going to take a little bit of time to go ahead and catalog and analyze those results. Uh, the intent when presented to the board was that that information would be presented to the committee, not that would be used as the basis to develop the committee. The committee membership, or the committee makeup had already been approved by the board. So the intent of this survey was to just give the information as the kickoff meeting at the committee level, so that they're able to start with as much information as possible. It wasn't intended to be used as, as a criteria or as a, a determining basis. There's just so much information that needs to be, uh, catalogued and analyzed for that. We just don't have the time.
All right.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hawkins, I, I think your, your point is a good one. Um, that would be one way of doing it. Um, right now, I mean, we, we kind of defined the process. We did put out a call for, for applications, and we did establish a deadline. That deadline has passed. And so as a matter of process, um, I, I'm not sure where that would leave us if we decided to kind of go back to the drawing board, um, and just ignore this first batch of applicants, or, or open it up for, for additional people to sign up. Um, I can see value in that certainly. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure the folks who submitted by the deadline would maybe be as agreeable to, to our doing that. So, just a thought.
Absolutely. You know, I, I would like to continue to follow the process that we've established, you know, and I do think those are, are some valid points, but we have established that, and we have applicants. And so I think our charge today is to appoint members to the vacation rental committee. And, um, any other further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
So what is, what's, what are we thinking about swapping out, um, Mr. Surbaugh for Mr. Larson?
I guess I would, um, I would be comfortable with that. I would have appreciated something in writing from Mr. Larson. I know, I'm glad you spoke with him.
Oh, I did not.
Oh, you did not.
Um, if, I think, did Tim, did you, somebody?
He, yes, I, I have spoken with Mr. Larson, and he did indicate that he certainly would be, it was his preference to have Mr. Surbaugh, uh, participate more than he would, and that he would pull out. I, I had the impression that he was expecting to, to be like the alternate, like he and Linda would swap out or something like that, or he would drop out of the realty, and then Linda would have to be moved up to the primary. I didn't, I didn't, um, get the sense that it would be swapping Steve for Mike in the realtor position. But the intent of the committee was to make sure that we had three applicants from CBR itself, understanding, of course, you have the realty side and you have the, the vacation rental side. But it just seemed a little over, uh, overrepresentative to have, uh, three representations on there. And so the, the, the way that it was submitted from the steering committee to this board has two positions on there. And I, I don't think anybody specifically targeted Steve to say, well, we can't have Steve on there. It was more because Mike naturally had to be primary for realtor, and there were only two for that spot.
Okay.
I think, I think there was only two applicants. I don't think Mike is involved with CBR.
Not any longer.
Is that accurate?
He's not an owner of that, that corporation.
Okay.
He's an owner.
But that, um, is certainly, uh, something to be aware of if, if there were three, uh, representation from one, one company.
Madam Chair, um, if I could, um, I participated in the, in the steering committee discussions, and I want to thank, um, the folks who were part of that committee for, for their, their thoughtfulness in making these recommendations. There was a lot of discussion, and it was hard. It was really hard. Because we, you know, we have committed all along that we want to have a committee that represents a diversity of perspectives. Super important to this process. And for, for, for us to end up in a good place where we have, um, uh, an outcome that is credible, that has the buy-in of the community, we need to have different voices at the table. And I feel like the, the steering committee did a really great job of trying to achieve that, that balance. Um, from my perspective, having been in those conversations, and yes, we did talk about the, um, the possibility of having Cascade Vacation Rentals, uh, overrepresented on, on this group. Um, from my perspective, I think the, the change that you're suggesting, Commissioner Mills, would, would still maintain that balance. And so if we're confident that, uh, Mr. Larson is, is, uh, okay with stepping off the committee and with having, uh, Mr. Surbaugh step in as the, uh, Realtor representative, I think that would be a good, good compromise.
I feel comfortable with that. Other commissioners?
I guess I'd prefer to hear that from Mike Larson himself.
Yeah, I, you know, and that's why I asked.
Um, this, you know, this is a huge, um, thing in our community to have this discussion. And I'm feeling hesitant already about our process. Um, I understand, I voted for this list last time, but now with new information, I'm like, oh, I don't know. I, um, and I appreciate your work. It's not easy, I know, choosing between people. Uh, I, I don't know what to do about.
So I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Tim.
If, 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 if I could say, and, and perhaps I, I wasn't clear, it's just, um, I, I do want to be clear that Mike was very clear in terms of he would rather Steve participate than him. I mean, he.
Okay.
So you spoke to him personally?
Yes, I, I did. Spoke to him a, a few times about this matter, and, and he was clear. So I, I want to make sure that that point is very clear. Uh, he did make that clear.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, I was, I was on the steering committee also, and that sounds like a logical decision, and I would support that also, what Dave's suggestion.
I love logic. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Were there other, like, I, I'd like to know more about other concerns with the process, or, or just?
Well, I, I'm just wondering.
You said new information.
I didn't, I, I never went and applied, so I don't know what questions were asked during the application process of, um, so yes, I did have some more questions. Well, really, you know, public, what's your background? Where you, where do you live? Um, do you live next to a vacation rental? Have you ever had a vacation rental? Those types of questions that I realize were not asked during the application process. And so when I'm thinking ahead of what might come out of the 580 And so, when I'm thinking ahead of what might come out of the 580 surveys and then thinking about who I'm choosing or agreeing to be on that committee, well, does that really represent what the issues are? That was my concern, so.
Understood.
It just feels like maybe we should have seen that before we chose the committee. And that's where my, "Ooh, maybe we didn't do this process in the right order."
So, so to clarify, your, your concerns are more about the selection of the, the public positions?
Well, well, we have a lot of government on here. So, yes, all of the other optional ones. Yes, I'm just wondering if we have, I'm going to have to just trust that these people will listen to the public and speak up when they, when it needs to be said.
And I feel confident in that, Commissioner Mills.
And just to, just to reiterate the buck stops here. So, I, I think it's a very good list and I really do appreciate Mr. Larson being willing to, to step down because I really do think we need, we need expertise on this to help just be more involved there. Clearly, we know everyone's bias going into this and what their interests are, but it's those perspectives and, and really, you know, listening to understand what those perspectives are and the impacts of their, of, of the ordinance that we create. And I think it's important to hear, hear, hear that expertise in that conversation. So, that was why I was recommending that.
All right.
And I'll make the motion to scratch Mr. Mike Larson off of the committee and replace with Mr. Steve Serba and accept it as is otherwise.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and we have support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim.
All right. Human Resources. Leah has some good news for us, good information.
Yes, thank you for having me this morning. I am, sorry, for today with three different job descriptions that we have reviewed and updated. These are existing job descriptions that have gone before the Personnel Committee and the Classification Committee. So, two from Public Health and Human Services and one from Land Services. I can just start right at the top of the list. So, the first one was the Social Worker One Family Services and Licensing Case Manager. This is, like I said, an existing position that hadn't been updated in some time. So, it was good to get it reviewed and made sure that we were accurately accounting for the job duties.
All right, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Commissioner Hawkins. We had a, a conversation yesterday just about the process with the Personnel Committee and, and job descriptions and a little bit of a history there. And one aspect that I am pretty in, in the dark about is the classification and, and the grading system and process. And so, I don't know if we could talk a little bit about that just to, you know, shed some light on it.
Absolutely, certainly. So, we do have a classification committee that consists of Attorney Hickin, Sheriff Eliason, Allison McIntyre, Tim Nelson and myself. Once the reviews go through the Personnel Committee, then we take time and meet. And there's a grading system, we use Keystone System, which was established during our last classification and comp study. I actually brought it with me, how it works. So, it's a five-factor process evaluating, I'll just read through all of them so you have an idea. So, we each have this system in front of us that we review. We each get the job description, we go through and then we classify how we want to grade each one. And then we come together, meet to discuss and come to that final conclusion. So, the first factor is evaluating knowledge, skills and competence. So, it has a lot to do with education level, experience needed and requirements of the job. And so, that's one scoring position. Factor two is evaluating level of responsibility and accountability. So, looking at how this position impacts first the level of freedom, like where does this person, how much authority do they have within the job? Do they have a supervisor? Are they a supervisor? Are they a department head, et cetera? Then what is their freedom to act? So, even if you are, have a supervisor, what is your level of authority within that job? And then three, how do you impact, I'll say, the department, the community at large? So, it can be different levels. Do you have a team level impact, a department level impact, multi-department level impact? And then how that works. And so, then there's a three score and then we find the correlating number that associates. So, it could be a, yeah. And then number three, then it's evaluating the level of complexity and mental effort. So, looking at the job, do you have, are you doing routine work that's very set structure? You know, you have a set system that you have to follow. Is it something you need to analyze on a broader level? Are you looking within statutes? I'm just using some examples here, but are you looking within statute and trying to determine? And so, that would be your diversity and complexity. And then your level of response required within that. Do you have to, are you just working with the best choices given to you? Kind of, here's your options, this is what I choose A, B, C, T to do. Or are you needing to analyze? Do you need to examine what potential solutions there are, potentially come up with new solutions? So, let me look at that. And then factor four is evaluating contacts and interpersonal communication. So, who are you communicating with when you do this? Are you communicating within your department, maybe just with yourselves? Are you potentially interacting with the public on a higher level? Other department heads, other community members or leaders across the state, across our community? Looking at the aspect of that and then what's your impact of those communications are? You may be interacting with people at the state level, but is it to inform them or to attempt to work together to come up with problems and solutions to issues? So, working more along the lines of, one of the words is actively persuade or negotiate that we use when we determine that. So, that's factor four. And then factor five is evaluating the work environment. And so, this is looking at hazards. What kind of physical activity do you need to do? Is it mostly just sitting at a desk or is it in the field, working with heavy equipment? And then what kind of exposure do you have to injury or potential harm? And that can be physical or mental, emotional. And so, those are the five factors that we each review per job description, lay them out, I have a worksheet right here too that we do, and then record where we come up to and it's, yeah, and then talk through. So, I don't know. It's a, it's a, it's a process to learn and it's, I think, you know, between the five of us doing it, I think it's a great opportunity for us all to review, ask questions to each other. Why did you come up with this, you know? And then go from there. I can go into more detail with you, Commissioner Mills.
The only thing I had a question on was are they, excuse me, are they weighted? Is there a weighted, one, one question is more heavily weighted than another or that type of thing? That's what I'm accustomed to.
Yep, yep, and it is. And so, when we look at, excuse me, the factors, I don't know if I have that printout here. But yes, it is. Like, a factor one has the knowledge, skill, competence. You know, they can range anywhere from an A1, which is 30 points, to a 7G, which is 280. And I apologize, these may not have a whole lot of relevance when I say that out loud.
But that's what I was expecting because if you have some positions that take you years through certifications, educations and other things, to be able to have that knowledge and judgment and ability to apply it, that normally has a higher weighting than some of these others. You know, and it doesn't mean that experience doesn't come into play. It does, but, you know, you'd have to lay the whole thing out. Okay.
Yeah, level of responsibility, accountability has a, has a high weighted.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, and then, you know, a working environment has a little bit of a lower end of the weighting.
All right, that's helpful. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Leah. That's very complex. That was very helpful. It, it, it's, well, going through job descriptions, writing job descriptions, evaluating job descriptions alone is a very tedious, difficult process. And then that's next level altogether. So, I really appreciate that insight. I'm very grateful I'm not on that committee. It's interesting though, I wonder if a commissioner, what's the appropriateness of a commissioner being on that committee? I bet you no one's going to jump up and, and want to do it, but it's just a, just a question. Well, maybe, maybe we do have someone who would, would want to jump in and do it, but, um, yeah.
I don't know that it would be appropriate though.
Well, that's what I'm wondering if it would be.
If I vote, yeah.
Oh, I see.
I'd have to think about. Yes, that happens other places, but.
We could sit in and observe, yeah. But some of, some of the conversation that Commissioner Hawkins and I had yesterday was just about language in, in some of the role, uh, job descriptions and how much of a factor that is in, in the evaluation process. Are there some, you know, trigger words and, and, or is it, it sounds like there's, yeah, it's really hard to quantitate.
It is, yeah.
Verbal, verbal responsibilities, I guess, because it is not, yes, no, black, white. It's, it's interpretation and frankly, understanding of the job and, and that level of complexity. So, so on that note, maybe it's not so appropriate for Commissioner to be involved. But I really appreciate the insight, so thank you.
I, I would defer if the commissioner would be appropriate to. I mean, I don't, like you said, the voting part maybe, I, I don't know, but.
I wonder if Attorney Hickin has a perspective on that.
Yeah, she's also on the committee too, so she can explain in more detail too.
Madam Chair, I, about a commissioner serving on the committee, I feel like this is something I've considered before and I don't remember the conclusion that I came to before. It does make sense to me that were a commissioner to sit in through the meetings that they should not be voting in both the committee and here. Although I don't even know if that should be a hard and fast rule. I'd have to consider it. But I want to let you know, just kind of echo what Leah said about how carefully we consider these decisions and how carefully we discuss the scoring of these positions. And it's interesting because over the course of ti, I've been on the committee since it began and, you know, the composition has changed a bit with, you know, changing roles and, and turnover. It's interesting that once somebody becomes experienced with using this tool and comparing the job descriptions to the tool and scoring, how our scores become more and more consistent without, without even, you know, we all try to independently score these without considering what the other committee members would, would use or would score. And our scores start to line up as everybody becomes more familiar with the tool and how to read job descriptions. And to me, that is a sign that the tool kind of works and that we are all using it consistently and that we are all interpreting these job descriptions about the same. We also don't seem to have any hesitation to interrupt the process and say, "Wait a minute, there are too many, this description is too vague in this way and in this way and we feel like we need to turn it back to the, the supervisor and have them better describe this position." Another thing that I wanted to mention that just kind of around integrity of this process is that obviously, the members of this committee are also supervisors and department heads who are presenting their own staff's job descriptions to the committee. They are not, our, our process excludes them from voting when they have their own job, a job description of their own staff in front for review. It also excludes them from discussion of the job description and, and how it should be scored if it's from their own department. And only, only if they are present and if a member of the committee has a clarifying question about the job description is that person asked to speak. So, I just wanted to describe a little more what the process is like and, and why I think it's a good one that has integrity. It's also a really complicated thing to try to measure the value of a job and to line it up to, you know, this system and make it more black and white than really it is. And so, no tool is going to perfectly help us to do that. One other thing that just popped into my head that I should mention is that we always are reminding each other that we are measuring the job, the position by way of the job description and not by way of our own anecdotal, like who's sitting in that position. Like if we're, we don't think about what, what Leah does in her job and what we know of how she does her job. We go and we look at the job description of her job and we try to measure that against the tool because we know that, like, turnover happens and, and essentially, the person, like, in a perfect world, the person hired to take over after another person leaves should be doing the job the same way and in accordance to the job description. We're measuring the job description, we're not measuring the individual who currently sits in that job or most recently did. Are there any other questions that I can help with as a committee member? And?
Not, not a question, but just really appreciate that further insight, especially about not having a supervisor vote or discuss. I think that's a really important aspect of it as far as, you know, keeping the, the person out of it. At least from my perspective, having these job titles either change or just the sheer number of job titles really helps me not understand who's, who's doing that. It gets, it gets confusing at times when we're talking in the Personnel Committee. It's, it's easy for me to separate that there, so. Yeah, I, I, I really appreciate that. And again, Leah, thank you for, for talking more about it. I'm, you know, I, as a commissioner, I struggle with wanting to be fully involved, fully engaged, down to, in the weeds, you know? And I just have to, you know, regularly remind myself to rise up and try to stay at that higher level and, and trying to, you know, work and operate at that level. And some, I mean, I feel like we often get down into the details. Maybe that's just the nature of the job is finding that balance, going down, coming up and all that sort of stuff, so.
Absolutely, Commissioner's fallacy.
And I applaud that view. That's exactly where we're supposed to be, more governance and oversight. But hearing that discussion by Attorney Hickin helped because I have gone through these both as somebody developing and presenting and trying to, you know, and you have something in mind for the position and you put it in there. And don't get me wrong, you do as a person, as an author of it, you try to make sure that you've supported the position appropriately to get it what you believe is the fair rate of pay, right? Doesn't mean that's where committees come out and that's why the, it had, because they're measuring against all, right? And so, that's important. And what's important to me is that we're doing this in an independent fashion, which I now have confidence we are doing that in an independent fashion with challenge back and forth to make sure the words equal what we're, you know, what we're coming out, we've used. We have a tool that is recognized and, and helps the committee get there. And we have the experience now with the folks that are doing it. The other key piece to me is this isn't a one-time and it's done. The process is, continues to go through. These are, and it was always our intention, as I understood it, that these would be on a review cycle. Now, granted, we're not a huge organization, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to be real fast, but that's the intent. And that's what you're seeing now, some of these haven't been upgraded in a long time. So, it's a refresh and so, it should give you that sense that we continue to evolve and we get to, to review that. Key piece that was given, you never write the position or you never evaluate the position for the person that's currently in it. You always have to, what is the vision of that job? What is it supposed to do? That person may be doing it, current person may be doing it not so well or they may be knocking it out of the park and quite frankly, they're the next person to move up, right? But again, you don't overinflate it based on the person and you don't, you know, minimize it because of the performance of the current applicant or the current person doing it.
I think our discussion really shows that we have a good tool. We have experienced people working there and there's a lot of integrity to the process. and there's a lot of integrity to the process and that gives me a great deal of comfort knowing that.
And if we were going to get down into the weeds, I'd be looking at this guy over there and saying, there's a problem, get into it. That's not my job, that's our administrator's job.
I appreciate that, thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair. Another thing that came to mind, just in conversation with Commissioner Hawkins, was in that history of job descriptions in the Personnel Committee, past administrator was adamant about if a job description is longer than two pages, it's not, it's too long, you know, it's not, you know, summarizing things adequately. And that is how we were operating in the Personnel Committee for a bit. When we hired Pamela Dixon as our HR Director, I think she was still working within that until we switched administrators, both, I think, interadministrator Vina Rogers as well as Administrator Yorki now, that things have changed in that way and we're really fleshing these job descriptions out more to better and more accurately, more precisely describe the job. And I think that's to the benefit of employees to understand what's involved when they apply for the job, what's expected of them. And now, as we go through our job descriptions updates with DDA, I'm really curious how that is going to change our, the way we do things. So, and we're gonna be doing a trial there to see, but that was just something that came to mind, I was like, huh, I wonder how that's gonna go now, because some of these get quite lengthy and, yeah, I'm no expert there.
And that's something I was gonna mention, if I could. We do have the proposal from David Drowne Associates that they would, on an ongoing basis, review and update job descriptions, one-third of them every year over a three-year cycle and then start over so that we would always be having fairly current job descriptions. Having listened to the discussion this morning, we do have a system that by all accounts seems to be working really well. And so I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that we would automatically just have David Drowne start doing that work for us. I think it's something we need to consider because there is a cost, of course, to having department directors, the county attorney, et cetera, involved in this work. It can be very time-consuming and we don't necessarily get through all the job descriptions as quickly as we'd like to. And with the amount of churn that we have going on in the organization, I don't see that Leah is going to have a lot of time to do more of that kind of thing. And so I think we need to talk about, not today, but at some point in the not-too-distant future, what, how much sense it would make for us to kind of contract that work out. We would have to have a very high level of confidence that their ability to take over that work would leave us in as good a position as we are now with our current committee doing that work, so. Just wanted to mention that.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Yorki, for that. For whatever reason, it was out of my mind that DDA would potentially be doing the grading as well. I was thinking largely on the, on the.
They should.
Yeah, the description and, yeah, I do have concerns about that, but I'm also like Commissioner Swalson does as well, but I'm.
I've seen it tried.
Okay, yeah, it seems like that could be difficult or problematic. I'm willing to entertain it, I'm curious for sure, just to see how that, how that works and especially, you know, it's appealing considering how tedious and how involved that process is, the grading process. So that's really appealing to me, but I'm afraid that, yeah, I'm just afraid that the perspective won't be there, so.
Yeah, my only point with that is we always will take counsel from them. That's why we have them doing the reviews that we're doing right now. That's where that comes in, is when they look at a cross-star and they look at the pays and they look at the things that are going in, they're doing the comparisons with others. That's where that comes in. That will, by its very nature, start to modify everybody that's on the committee that's looking at them. So I don't want you to get the wrong impression, but my experience with having other contract firms come in, no matter how knowledgeable or their experience or other types of things, is you never want the supervisors and the managers and things to start to feel like they've lost control of the workforce in the positions and the descriptions because you're defining how you're running your organization. And when you start to get that sense, it's kind of insidious because then it starts to work through in a lot of different ways that you don't intend. So you don't, you want, we want our folks to feel the ownership of that and the development because it feeds into the development of the workers and it feeds into all these other things. So it's just, having done it once and we thought, oh, gosh, that feels good, we don't have to have, deal with that anymore. But unfortunately, in your mind, you start applying that to other things. It never was intended that way, but you just do it, you know what I mean? Because you don't feel responsible for that anymore, well, but you are.
I really appreciate that perspective.
Yeah, so it's just, if we go with that, it's okay, they can always come in, they can always assist. They can do the yeoman's work of, you know, taking the things and, you know, making adjustments or doing that type of thing and then bringing it back. That's okay and there's a fee to be paid for that. But I just worry, and just from an experience that I had, it doesn't mean it would be that way every time. It all comes down to the management and how you control that and how you work with your leadership team to make sure that they don't lose perspective by having some piece of that work done somewhere else. That's all I'll share on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Swalson, for that. It sounds akin to hiring a professional negotiator. Having that disconnect from the employees and the organization. It feels safer and easier, but maybe loses that connection or takes a step away from it. And I think that's really important to develop a healthy work culture, so I really appreciate that.
Good discussion on the whole process.
Lot of food for thought.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm chair, I would just like to give my perspective also. I do appreciate you explaining again how the grading process works and I appreciate you sharing about the process of outside counsel. And I will just admit, I am wary of the whole Keystone because that's exactly how this started, was we had an outside firm tell us what things should be. It created lots of angst that we're still dealing with today. And I realize that maybe my issues today with these job descriptions are probably not so much at the upper level of grading. I get you have a formula you have, you follow. And I appreciate that, you know, you finally, after many years, have come to a position where it makes it easier, which then gets back to the Personnel Committee and the writing of these job descriptions that I have issue with. The first one on this hasn't been done since 2016. Yes, things change, we revise things, totally appropriate. That should come before us and the committee discuss it. The next one on the agenda I have a problem with. One year since it was originally put, hired or whatever, approved by a previous board or our board. And now it's jumping to pay grades. Then we get to the third one. Somebody's had that position for, since 2016 and it hasn't been reviewed. I know they've had lots of things added over the years. So my question is, who else is out there in 2016 that hasn't been evaluated yet we're doing one that was just done last year? That's my concern. My other concern is that we make our job descriptions so specific that if there's one little change with our vendor or process, that job description is outdated and we have to do it again. I don't think, I am more of the, job descriptions should accurately describe the job and it should be the job and not the person. But it shouldn't be so detailed that it can become obsolete overnight. When, years ago, not so many years ago, we had a part-time HR person. We are now up to over one and a half positions in HR. Why? Because we have made the process so complicated. And now we're talking about contracting out some of that work. Maybe we should change our process. So, thank you for letting me vent here.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just in response to that, I guess, I think it's improved this whole time. I think it was really lacking in prior years and prior boards and prior administrations and I feel like we're just now starting to come to a more professional level of development and I find it really exciting. I'm sorry, it frustrates you. I certainly am aware of the financial implications there, but I do believe that it's making a better organization and I'm proud of it.
I would just like to respond to that. Totally want to have our job descriptions updated on a regular basis. But when you take one employee and make them eligible for to break pay grade jump before you've had an opportunity to make sure that somebody else has had that opportunity within the last six years, that's, I wanna know how many 2016 job descriptions for current employees have not been reviewed? Do you know?
I do, well, I can give you, yes, I do know. Right now, we're working on, sorry, it'll just take me a minute to get there. Right now, where the process stands, there was, there's approximately 15 job descriptions that haven't been reviewed and updated since the original Keystone. A couple of those actually aren't currently filled by anyone. I think as the organization has evolved, they have.
So approximately 13 employees in our organization have not had the opportunity to have a wage increase when others have had multiple. That is an issue for me. And Administrator Yorki, I would say this would contribute to a morale problem, in my opinion, if you're saying this employee deserves to have their job reviewed, but this one doesn't.
I guess one of the responses I would have is that, again, we're reviewing positions, we're not talking about individuals.
Correct.
And so it's about job descriptions.
We are working and employing individuals and we should give all individuals the same opportunity. And if we say we wanna have a three-year basis, when the Personnel Committee has limited time, I'm sorry, you have to make choices, which one deserves to rise to the top of the pile and which one says, you know what, you're gonna have to wait another few months.
Commissioner Mills.
I think that's something that's talked about. Well, firstly, I would just like to say, I feel like there is undue criticism to Leah and Administrator Yorki in kind of your statements, Commissioner Hawkins, because this is something that precedes their employment with the county and this is something they're trying to, we are actively working on and rectifying. We, the Personnel Committee absolutely recognizes the deficit there and it's begrudgingly talked about every meeting. But there's been so many fires to put out since four years ago, frankly, from my perspective, that we're a little disabled. But we keep, we keep working, we keep trying and we keep making progress. And I think it's a very good point to talk about, maybe emphasizing and updating job descriptions that haven't been in a long time. But what my impression is, sitting on the Personnel Committee, is we are trying to update the greatest need not based on the last time it was updated, more on how much things are changing. And so some jobs change a lot more than others and we're just trying to, trying to do the best we can, so. I'll switch with you.
You'll switch what?
You can be on Personnel.
Oh, okay.
Well, I guess what I heard was a little disturbing because what I heard was the only way you get a pay raise is if you have your position reviewed.
No, we have our step increases.
Okay. Just because you have a position description reviewed shouldn't equate to your level has changed, period. Your level shouldn't change, period, with just the description changed unless that position and the job responsibilities of that have changed. That's, I guess, where I'm at. And the other piece is, we have this effort that is ongoing, that is just part of good maintenance of an organization and its descriptions and its hiring and everything else. And we have this other that is reviewing of how we pay people across the organization and it appears to me that they've been somehow interlinked or confused.
Attorney Hickman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to that point, I'm starting to see where the perception could come about that having your job description reviewed equals a raise in pay. I can tell you, as a committee member, it does not. We are often affirming the previous score. And again, we're scoring these positions without knowing the outcome. But what I mean is, we get to that, we add up those five categories and we compare it to the chart that lines up a score with a class and we realize, okay, it's scored correctly. You know, it's been in the right class this whole time and there is no change. But you might not see those conclusions. The conclusions you're seeing are the ones that require Commissioner approval. They require a raise in class. And so I can definitely see where a commissioner could get the perception that reviewing the job description equates to a rise in pay, but it does not.
Thank you so much.
So the public health educator position, I laid out the previous job description side by side with the current job description. And there were a lot more things we are asking this new position to do that used to be done with the previous job description for another position. So now, instead of being the assistant to that position, this person is taking on quite a few of those responsibilities. And I understand they should be paid if they are doing that. But then that means the other person isn't doing that. Does that trigger a question in your mind? Well, if that person is no longer doing it, we should be changing, re-scoring that position at the exact same time?
How does that work in your process?
Gosh, I don't, we are usually relying on managers to bring job descriptions forward. But I don't know, since I, yeah, maybe Leah knows how the job descriptions get to us and in what order.
Yep, and I can answer that a little bit, yes. Job descriptions, we have a queue of how many, the older ones that we would like to review. We tend to go by department, focus on one department at a time versus just across the board with ones that haven't been reviewed because it, like you said, sometimes department-wise duties change within, so it's helpful to review them all at one time. And it also is helpful for a supervisor and department head that are reviewing them to have to just focus on job descriptions versus spreading it out over years. But they do come to us that way and also with a significant change in job duty that a supervisor is made aware of and then brings forward to me and to the Personnel Committee to review that. And then I apologize what the other part of the question was, but those are the two ways, main ways, that they come to.
I think the key part of the question was, did we take position A, which was rated at a certain level, take job responsibilities from that position, put them to position B? B, which caused that level to go up, right? And that's maybe proper scoring for this position now with those responsibilities. And the question comes back to, what about the first one? Did we go back and re-review that one because we've now removed responsibilities from that position? That's what's been inferred. I don't know if that's reality.
Yeah, and I can say, in the past, when we have done that, when we've split up job duties and looked, yes, we have looked. And, you know, I'm going to bring up the Main Highway Department as our most recent, when we talked about splitting up Foreman, Superintendent, Supervisor, looking and reviewing all of those job descriptions to make sure that they were all covering positions at the same.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, and it's a really good point to talk about. What I'd also say, as our small organization, there's a lot of overlap. And we try to not have redundancy, but there needs to be cross-training to cover each other. And so just because a position gets more responsibility doesn't necessarily mean that another one loses it. It's just that that responsibility can be spread out and trying to lessen the load and lessen burnout and just make a stronger team. So, very good to be concerned and aware of, but I think, yeah, I have to trust in supervisors and directors and just the whole, the whole team to make this, make this happen.
We've certainly had a really valuable discussion about the process and our concerns and what's working well and the integrity of the process that we do have. So I'd like to, given that discussion, go back to the positions that we have here and focus on the Public Health and Human Services, Social Worker and Family Services and Licensed Case Manager job description and the pay grade and circle back to focus on that.
Commissioner Mills.
Allison had her hand up a while ago or something, or did that go away?
I, I, thank you, Commissioner Mills. And Madam Chair, I think another relevant point to this discussion too is that an employee has at any time the right to request a review of their job description, which may or may not result in employee changes, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
So if there are any employees out there who have concerns about whether or not their job description is reflective of their duties, if they're being fairly compensated, they do have that right in our employee handbook or bargaining agreement to request that.
All right.
And I'd be happy to share, as we get into discussion of the specific job descriptions, what the impetus was for review of both of these in greater detail.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Thank you. Very helpful. Good reminder.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the PHHS Social Worker One Family Services and Licensed Case Manager job description with a pay grade of 170.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I will support.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the Public Health and Human Services, Public Health Educator job description and pay grade.
Madam Chair, and to Commissioner Hawkins' point, just a year ago, there was the approval of this position. So maybe we can talk a little bit about what prompted this one.
Yes, so this was prompted in two ways, by employees' request to have their job description reviewed. Also, with our recent review and development of the job description, the Public Health Educatorship position, it was comparatively, which shares similar job duties, was reviewed and determined that it did need to be reviewed and that there were duties that were missing from the current Public Health Educator position. And I don't know if you want to go into a little more detail, Allison, or if anyone has any other questions on that.
Other questions?
I'm just going to share publicly, one of my concerns I shared with Leah yesterday. One of the bullet points here says, "Build trust-based working relationships with a variety of agencies, groups, and individuals." And I just want to share. I would hope we expect every single employee to build trust-based relationships with the people they work with, every department. And that line that was added to this job description is what was a red flag for me is like, now we're adding buzzwords to job descriptions. That, I would think, is more appropriate for our handbook. Because why would one job require you to build trust-based relationships over Diana over there in Land Services? She needs to build trust-based relationships with everybody she works with. Auditor's office, election judges. Really?
Madam Chair, I can see the relevance of that bullet point to the scoring system, though, which is that we, part of how a job is scored is to, is in the communications part, which I think is the fourth category that we score on. You, part of how you measure a job and score it is how many levels of other entities and individuals does a person, is a person required to regularly communicate with as part of their job? For example, some folks are basically just communicating within their department and maybe they'll answer calls from the public. Other folks are, on the other end of the spectrum, like department heads, county administrator, are communicating with state representatives, senators, tribal government, you know, the leads in DNR, Forest Service. And so there's a spectrum in between there. Like, we want people, depending on their job duties, to be representing the county well. And especially if they are regularly communicating and dialoguing with leadership or non-leadership of outside agencies, state, federal, you know, administrative agencies of the state or feds. So that is likely where that bullet point came in. That job description may not have accurately depicted before the level of communication required with outside-the-county individuals and entities. Does that make sense?
It does, and I appreciate that. And it goes back to my earlier point of what position was, is this, it's under another position and you're removing it now. Actually, we moved this into two of these. So we've got two positions underneath this upper level that were, took that responsibility down to the next level. I think that's appropriate for directors of departments and supervisors, but for the person underneath that is, really? Hmm. And that's where it goes back to, yeah, I hope every single employee here builds trust-based relationships with the people they work with.
Any further discussion or remarks?
I wanted to, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Attorney Hickon.
Thank you. I also, that reminded me that I wanted to respond to that concern specifically, that when you create redundancy in a position, in two positions, let's say, now instead of only this position having the responsibility to be the contact for an outside agency, now you have two positions that are sharing that, or one is like the primary contact for outside agencies, for example. But the other job still has that responsibility. Job descriptions, if they are written well, will reflect that this is the primary job responsible for that communication. And this person is backup in that format and, or in that responsibility. And we, the tool allows us and directs us to score those jobs differently in that factor. One person is the primary, they should get a higher score in that category. The other person, okay, it's just an occasional part of their job, so it's not going to affect their score. So that is supposed to be how it works.
And I guess that was when I was comparing side by side and the word assist was removed.
Yeah.
More than once. That's what's triggered for me, like, well, really? I totally understand the position assisting. I don't understand this position having the responsibility for that.
And I would just assume that that was an intentional removal that fits the job duties as they are designed and as is made necessary by the operation of the department and the requirements of our work.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the PHHS Public Health Educator job description with a pay grade of 170.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills, Commissioner Swalison.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, three to one. And now we have our Land Services Technician job and description and pay grade.
Yes, so this is an existing job description that used to be called Planning and Zoning Secretary, so it has had a name change to Land Services Technician. And again, is one of those that had not been updated in a number of years. And for the request of the director and employee, we have, and just the age of the job, have reviewed it. There's been a number of changes with technology and other job duties that have come along. So it has, yeah, been updated and is at a 140 is what it was scored at.
Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Hawkins.
Yep, and thank you for talking about this one, too. I'm really glad this is getting done. This one should have been done a while ago, I think. My issue with this one is really some of the terminology, that we could make this job description obsolete tomorrow if we change vendors. I'm all about documenting, we have computer systems we need to use and we have processes we need to use. But specifying RT Vision, ePermitting, or Host Compliance in the job description, to me, just, that's where the level of detail makes the HR department continually redo their job when we change vendors. We can say some of these things without specifying, enters permits into ePermitting system. But to me, that, we need to be somewhat more generic in our job descriptions to make them more usable.
Mr. Nelson, thank you for coming forward because I think you have some inside information on this job description.
He does, always.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Hawkins, that is a really good point. And we do continually evaluate vendors and which, what we use or don't use or try to switch and put out RFPs and such. So perhaps just a simple addition, a line saying, "Or other updated vendors or software application or something like that," instead of currently listing, I mean, in addition to currently listing, because that's what we have right now, but if we just added "or other updated software applications." Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, would it be okay if we took out the specific names and made just generic names? Like, I don't, I'm not even familiar with RT Vision, sorry. But you've probably used it, Commissioner Mills. Is it the?
But if you were, we'd be very interested in hiring you for that position. If it were to come up, so.
I have no objection to that. I'm just, the Classification Committee, as Molly very eloquently indicated, you know, we're looking at the complexity of the position and the duties and the tasks. It isn't tied to a specific vendor. So I have no objections, we have no objections, and that is just amongst those of us that had worked with it, those were the easily understood references that are in the position. But that's a very good point, to keep it neutral. Yeah, so what could we use instead of RT Vision or Host Compliance, Granicus for language?
You could use a hosting system, you know, hosting and ePermitting.
EPermitting and hosting system.
Yes.
I would like to keep RT Vision and Granicus, if I'm saying that right, Granicus, in the job descriptions, because I do think it is also important that that knowledge base, if someone has that knowledge base existing and were to come in, I think that those are important.
So we utilize that "or," all right.
But I'm, yeah, we could take it out of the essential duties.
I appreciate that specific language in that perspective as well, because I was of a mind. Normally, in the Personnel Committee, I catch those names and try to keep it generic, but for the very reason that Commissioner Hawkins brought up, is then we have to redo it. Although, we have just done minor updates and that's very easy for both the Personnel Committee and, I'm assuming, the Grading Committee as well, so I'm fine with it. Myself.
Any other discussion, Commissioner Swalison?
I would motion to approve the Land Services Technician job description with a pay grade of 140.
Okay, and is that including the change in language?
I leave that up to the Department Manager.
I'm comfortable with how the Personnel Director expressed it, and so I don't know.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that that was included in the motion.
As amended by the.
As amended, right. All right, is there a second to that motion?
A second, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's wonderful, my.
So moving on in our agenda, we're at Item Eight, and Attorney Hickon.
All right, let me get caught up. I need to get caught up on where we are. Item?
Item.
Oh, the airport ordinance.
Airport.
Yes, okay. All right, what we're asking the commissioners to do is to set a public hearing, now that the airport ordinance has been through multiple iterations, I think we're on version 10.
10, yes.
And it's been reviewed by the FAA and MINDOT, our partners, funding partners and regulatory partners in the airport. It's been through my review and multiple times and have also recently incorporated those suggestions, which were really minimal, by the way, mostly in language and formatting. And commissioners themselves have been through the airport ordinance, and I think that we've addressed any concerns that commissioners brought up. We are now ready to finally set this for a public hearing, which is the legal requirement for any new ordinance or ordinance that's being amended. So we're requesting, I think that what would work best is to have this put on July 12th or later. July 12th is our next regular meeting of the Board, is my understanding.
That is correct.
And we require at least 10 days' notice, be published in the official newspaper for any public hearing. So the 12th is the earliest that we could do it. I also think, and maybe Commissioner Sullivan or Mr. Powers can update me on this piece, that the Airport Commission was requesting an evening public hearing. I don't know the status of that.
They requested a morning.
A morning.
Hearing for 9:30 a.m.
There you go.
Right within our meeting, so.
So I did, I think that I attached the most recent version of the ordinance to this agenda item. Please let me know if you have any questions about that or anything else.
I'm just really pleased to see this moving forward. It has been a very long process with a lot of work involving the FAA and MINDOT Aeronautics. I'm just really pleased with the team effort and the attention to detail, and I'm really excited to bring it before the public at the public hearing and move forward. Anything you'd like to share, Auditor Powers, since you've been on the fringes of this?
No, I just echo what you say. It's been a long, long.
Commissioner Swalison.
I would then motion to approve setting the public hearing for the airport ordinance on July 12th, 2022 at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioners' Room.
Thank you so much. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we take a?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we take a small break?
We can certainly do that. Let's take a short break until 10:35. Thank you. So was your home's scent improved?
Attorney Hicken? It's getting there.
Oh.
It's getting there.
I hadn't thought about that odor in quite a long time, and I saw that, I'm like, oh, it just all came flooding.
Oh, you've got, you've had that experience?
Not in the house. I had a dog that had a mishap. I was pheasant hunting, and I encouraged the dog. It was like, he was acting really birdy.
Yes.
It was skunky, and I told him to go in there, and he got sprayed, and I got sprayed.
Yeah.
I learned my lesson.
The smell of a skunk, when you drive by roadkill is one thing, the smell of it, that chemical, whatever it is, up close, I mean, it's like, you know this, but if you guys haven't experienced it, it's like, if you light a match and the smoke accidentally, you breathe it in accidentally, that kind of burning acrid.
Sulfur.
Sulphury smell, it's, ah, it's overwhelming. And it's in my house right now, because our dog got sprayed in the garage, and it must have gotten through the vent system, because there are vents between the garage and the house. This happened on Friday night at like 10:30 p.m. And actually, fixing the smell of the dog was the easiest thing about it. Our garage smells terrible. This morning, the heat kicked in, and I was sitting by a vent, and I was like, oh my God, because it's in the vent system. And then somebody said, one of my friends said that they ran over a skunk on the road, and it got into the vent system of their car, and it was like a solid six months that their car smelled, so like, it's kind of a nightmare that that be on house.
Do you have sheet rock in your garage?
I think so, yeah.
You might want to try a product called Kills on it. It's a paint that goes over it, and that will help remove, or actually seal in, and you won't be able to smell it.
That's a good idea.
I tell ya. I have a red streak right here.
Because I can help you, I can help prepare a notice.
Oh, hopefully, you haven't seen it before. I only get it on occasion.
There's probably something about this.
Oh, yeah. No, I do understand.
Oh.
Sometimes I'm a little thick.
Your bug lights are gone.
Yeah.
Unless you have new ones.
No.
Oh, I got so bitten the other day. It's just, and my poor dogs.
Yes. Okay, and I can draft it, it would just be nice to have like.
I actually have ordered a product online that I was told really will help my canines. They go out in the, literally, go out in the yard and.
Well, yeah, there's a few of them that help with the bugs and this type of stuff for the dogs. I mean, we've had them before, whether it be the mosquitoes or the flies or that type of thing, and it can cause them real health issues. And, you know, with the number of ones up here, I could see where that, you know, having a pet could really be an issue with them being out.
I actually, I bought a little device that has a UV light that burns at night and a fan that sucks all the gnats and the mosquitoes, and it works.
Really?
It's unbelievable, and it's very quiet.
Unlike the bug zappers of old?
Yeah, it makes no noise at all, but, oh, is it effective.
Yeah, those were for show.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah. That's, I was intrigued by it initially.
You'd have to have 500 up on my acreage.
Well, yeah.
To do anything, too.
Yeah, they made a lot of noise, and were kind of fun in a way, but you still got chewed out.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Isn't that, isn't that, I was trying to remember the product name of it, but.
Yeah, wasn't Bug Zapper?
Well, of the old one, yes, but this new one.
Yeah, it's, um.
Something back or something like this. And it was interesting, because somebody else had posted something about it and said that it really worked.
I just got some.
This one seemed to really work, and somebody else posted about, yeah, but they cost some large amount of money, and they said, oh, gosh, I'm glad I bought mine, like, several years ago.
Catchy, okay, interesting. Forty bucks.
What is it?
It catches all the gnats and the mosquitoes in your house, very quietly and with an ultraviolet light.
And it works?
And then you, you can buy the little discs, they're sticky, and replace them. You can also cut yours out and put glue on a piece of paper, and that works, too.
There you go.
And there's what, there's what it looks like. It's about as tall as this phone.
I would wonder if.
Okay, so it's, this one's meant to be inside your house for those guys that sneak in.
That sneak in on your clothing or on your dogs.
And of course, always bother you when it's like 3:30 in the morning.
How to get rid of bugs. So, yeah. I think I should become a sales rep for it.
Maybe so.
I'm so excited about this product. It's called Catchy.
And you're using it.
But glue on a piece of paper works just as well, and I can save forty bucks.
Yeah, they try to get you to, you know, you get like 10 of these little pieces of paper with glue to slide in there, but you can make your own.
But the blue light, the blue light actually attracts.
Yes, it does. That's the trick.
And carbon dioxide also does.
Oh, okay, sure.
Speaking of bugs, when I was in New York City, I got bit by a tick.
I saw that.
And you got lyme.
Ah, and I got lyme, and, isn't that just crazy?
In New York City?
Yes.
Yes, they're every.
I mean, I didn't, that's part of why I went a week before I did anything, because I was like, first of all, I didn't get bit by a mosquito the other time.
Of all the things that could befall you in New York City, that wasn't what I was thinking of. Wasn't the top of my list by any means.
It's so ironic, like, I leave the woods in Lewson, and I get bit by a tick in the next city. Yeah, they have, I did a Google search, and apparently, they have lyme, they have tick-borne illnesses there.
I got lyme in 1988 and had to convince physicians what it was. I got the Boundary Waters Journal, and they were the first publication to talk about how it arrived in Minnesota. They had photographs, and I had to take it to doctors to show them, because nobody had heard of it back then. And I'm like, this is what this is.
And if it doesn't get treated right away, it can be chronic.
I have a couple of friends that really suffer.
What's the main symptom? Is there one?
You can, you get an incredible fatigue with it, and then what my two friends suffer from is arthritis, and it came on very early, like, in their 50s.
Joint pain, yeah. Isn't it kind of an immunoh, you know, an immune response type, autoimmune?
Autoimmune, yeah. But, oh.
Yeah, so I hate antibiotics, but I was like, yep, I will definitely.
Yeah, for that, that's really wise.
Did you do the bike races?
They tried to convince me I'd just come back from China.
I didn't have a bike that was serviceable for that.
That I had got in some kind of disease over there, and I'm like.
We don't have a bike shop. I'd have to go to the Twin Cities and spend a couple of days riding bikes at a shop or something and figure out what I want.
It's kind of cool that I went, I traveled.
I'm on my 17-year-old bike.
I went to a big city, and I came back, not with COVID, but with lyme. It's like, maybe this is a good thing for the pandemic. It's time for an update, Brady.
After a rally race, I got the brakes fixed.
A brighter spot.
So I have a big deal plea hearing at 11 o'clock, but I probably need to leave.
It was supposed to rain, so I was like.
And I think, you know, we just have.
It was beautiful, though.
Administrator Yorki's piece, and, so I think, but certainly we are going to need to leave.
So I have a plea hearing in a big case at 11 o'clock, and I'd like to leave at about quarter to, so if you want my, in order to feedback on any other items, let me maybe start with them.
Yep. All right, well, welcome back from our recess. We're going to move on to item 11, which is Administrator Yorki's updates.
Okay, so the first item I have today.
Best, Brady.
Oh.
Could I?
I apologize.
I just don't want to miss it. I have one item.
I didn't, okay, no worries, I just thought we had changed the order.
Yeah, we had a little discussion over here.
Oh, did you? No, no, no. Sorry.
Okay, all right. I thought, okay, so we'll move back to item 10, Auditor's.
No worries.
What's going on, though?
Just kidding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a resolution establishing an absentee ballot board. The only thing that's instigating this is I noticed a significant law change. We've had one in place since 2008, a resolution establishing the process for it, but the statute, the main statute that it references changed, and pretty significant, so I thought we should update it. So now, instead of referencing 1.3, it's referencing 403B 121, I mean, some of the main, just a lot of things that we're doing, we're not waiting to do it to establish this, we're already doing all these processes, but things like the processes when you reject a ballot, and then what do you have to do? If it's more than five days, you resend. If it's after, if it's closer than five days, then you try to contact them any way possible in order to commit, anyway, things like that are now in this statute, and lots of others. Several pages on storage of ballots and things like that, so. It, since the beginning, we've authorized the Auditor's Office, the Auditor, to actually name the individuals each year, so I'm asking for that authority again. So it's a combination of my staff and other election judges to achieve party balance on when you actually reject ballots, you need that specifically in the statute, so I guess I'll leave it to questions, otherwise.
All right. Well, it's absolutely very important that we do it, timely that we do it now and get everything in order. Any questions for Auditor Powers? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Solis. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And now Administrator Yorki.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item under my section is a request that we received from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to provide a letter of support for a proposal that DNR is planning to submit to America the Beautiful to support moose habitat planning work. As we know, the moose is a really important part of our ecosystem here in Cook County, and populations have been diminishing over time, and so this project, if it's funded, would enable DNR to do some really foundational work to assess habitat in the county and make plans to enhance it. So I would request the Board's approval to send a letter of support.
Any questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Solis. We have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is an update to the county travel policy, and there's not really a lot new here. What we're doing is basically just incorporating the GSA reimbursement rates for meals and incidental expenses into the county travel policy. So that's something that the Board approved at the end of last year, and the use of these reimbursement rates is pretty standard across local government. It's something that governments adopt, because GSA updates those reimbursement rates every year, so it really takes the guesswork out of determining whether we're adequately reimbursing staff for meals and other expenses while they're on official travel. The other thing that we did was to update the language in the, under the mileage reimbursement section. That had not been updated, I think Brady mentioned that it predated his arrival here, is that right, Brady?
I wasn't aware of that actual policy until before I was auditor, for sure, maybe even before I got here.
The policy was really old, it hadn't been updated for at least a decade. So basically, what we're doing is just clarifying the circumstances under which mileage will be reimbursed, given that we now have a remote work policy and that there are occasions when people work at home. The distinction is that if you are working at home out of convenience or by the employee's request, we would not reimburse mileage from your home to an official appointment. But if there were a circumstance, for example, that you were working at home because you had been directed to do so, let's say the courthouse had been closed down during a, due to a utility outage or something like that, in that circumstance, then that mileage would be reimbursed, because you're working from home by order of your supervisor. So those are the main changes to the policy, and I would entertain any questions.
Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, thank you. Did we get clarification on if you could only have one primary work site?
We did not.
Okay.
Our interpretation, so we'd gotten some feedback from Kelly Byrd, who processes these things in the Auditor's Office, and she had said, you know, let's make sure that the language and the policy is consistent with federal tax law.
Ah.
Yeah, and so that's a distinction we've made.
Okay.
And we believe this is consistent.
Okay.
And I believe we'll.
Auditor Powers?
I believe we'll be making other adjustments. That's a long travel policy we have, so we probably haven't worked through with everybody that deals with it for every, you know, every detail. I fully expect it to come back again, but, yeah.
Yeah, I should mention, too, Lori Erickson in Public Health and Human Services also asked about the applicability of reimbursement for a meeting, for example, that somebody would have in Duluth, like a midday meeting, where they'd be driving down and coming back the same day. The question was, would the first and last day policy, which is 75% of full reimbursement for a full day, would that apply in that situation? And the answer is no, it would not. The only thing that would be reimbursed is if they actually have lunch, that meal would be reimbursed, but there would not be any additional reimbursement, so. We're trying to make this common sense, and the whole purpose of adopting the GSA rates was to really minimize paperwork, right, just streamline it.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Question about that, because that 75% line, which I don't have pulled up right here, was confusing to me. 75% of MIE, whatever. So I didn't understand how, on your first day, you only got 75% of your mileage, or what is it?
No, it doesn't apply to mileage, it's meals and incidentals.
Okay.
Mileage is separate.
So it's just.
Yeah, M, I, E is.
Meals, incidentals, and it's.
Correct.
Okay, I was thinking that was mileage, and that didn't make sense. So, but wouldn't it be more clear to have a timeframe if you leave before this time or if you?
Yes, and that language is in the, in the policy.
Or in, is it in the, yeah, there it is.
Okay, so we have a timeframe where your meals are, and we still say 75%. Yeah, I guess that was just really confusing to me of why that was necessary.
The first and last day of travel assumes that, for example, if you're starting, let's say you have a conference in Chicago, you start the morning in Chicago, you're traveling back to Grand Marais, assuming that you start the day in the destination, in your home before cer, before or after a certain time, that meal would, or that rate would apply if you get home, I think it's after 5:00 p.m. That 75% rate would, would apply.
It's anticipating you're having dinner at home.
One of your meals is at home and one is at the place you're traveling. But if you don't get home till nine o'clock at night, that night?
Right.
Your meal is covered 100%?
It is.
Yeah.
Because presumably you'd be eating out.
So it's kind of a both.
Yeah, and that's all it's trying to take into consideration. Even the start of the day, you know what I mean, if you're going to go, they expect you're going to, if you don't have a need to get up really, really early, you're going to have breakfast at home, and therefore, they're not going to cover that.
And I totally understand that, but that's, to me, it was like, why do we need both 75% and the timeframe? Which made me think we were combining and both applying, so, sorry, I didn't understand how that was supposed to work.
So are you clear?
I'm going to work on it.
Basically, I mean, if you, if you arrive home before 5:00 p.m., then you get the 75%, and if it's after 5:00 p.m., I think that's.
Oh, you get, so even if you don't have dinner, you get 75% of that cost?
Correct.
That's where my confusion comes in. Oh, so you get, to get paid for that dinner even though you didn't have dinner?
You don't get paid for it if you get home before 5:00 p.m., and you do if you get home after that.
Now, I'm confused.
Yeah, because if I get home at nine o'clock, I expect to eat dinner.
And you would. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what it's saying, that if you have to eat on the road, that gets reimbursed, because it's part, because you're doing so because it's part of your travel.
Yes, I guess the reason I'm confused, Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
The re, thank you. The reason I'm confused is the, the language, consistent with G, this is under G meals, the first paragraph about midway through. Consistent with GSA policy, the first and last day of travel will re, will be reimbursed at 75% of the M and I E rate if the first day of travel begins before 7:00 a.m. and the last day of travel ends after 5:00 p.m.
Correct.
In my mind, that would be 100% because you're on the road. It would be after 7:00 a.m. and before 5:00 p.m.
You are correct.
Okay, good. That's why.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. You are, you are correct, and I'm sorry. In my mind, it made perfect sense.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So yes, that language needs to be corrected to reflect the exact opposite.
Thank you.
Well, I got, I was like, yeah, yeah, that makes sense, and then I was like, wait a minute, this is opposite of.
I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying.
Go team.
Yes, that's, that's what it should say.
That's why we're all here together.
Yes.
It's a good thing I'm confused sometimes. All right.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Hawkins. I'm surprised we didn't catch that.
With that amendment and change, is there any other discussion? Anything else?
Madam Chair, I'm just really grateful that we're going over this, and I'm really grateful that Kelly Berg brought it to our attention.
Yes.
Because of some of the confusion, especially with the remote work policy, I think it's really good to clarify that, and.
And the, and the policy does include language that if there are any questions, if there are any ambiguities, that employees should consult with the auditor's office.
Awesome, yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you. Motion to approve.
All right.
As amended?
As amended, thank you.
Support.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, just one thing to note this week. I did get a request from the Lions Club to use the overflow parking lot for Fisherman's Picnic. I was just going to give approval to do that, wanted you to be aware of it. I think that's something that we do routinely for, for the art fair and for Fish Pick, so just wanted you to be aware of that request.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, we'll move on to item 12, Commissioner Concerns Updates. Anything at all?
I don't think I've got anything.
I have an exciting thing. Sea Club met for the first time in person in two and a half years.
Wow.
And it was really wonderful. We were outside, but it was so great to get together and to visit, and in addition to the work that we did, it was very joyful just to be able to gather together, so step in the right direction. Also like to mention Taste of the Trail on Sunday. Commissioner Wallace and I showed up at Gunpoint Lodge at the same moment. We did not discuss any business. There was not a third commissioner who arrived, and there was no quorum, so just, so the public is aware of that. Great event, great event.
Other items?
All right, well, we have our sales tax report and the budget from the Arrowhead Library System, and then we have some recognition of staff. We have Matt Nishheim in the Highway Department. He's the new Highway Maintenance Superintendent. Talked a little bit about that position earlier today, and Christina Matson with PHHS, the Ship Coordinator and Public Health Educator. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll make the motion.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Wallace. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.